Kathy? I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Go. Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. It will have the invocation by Kingsley Okaraki and with a pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Nguyen.
Please face our flag and say that we pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a presentation.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like John Clark to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council presents its monthly business spotlight, highlighting outstanding businesses in the Garden Grove community. This evening's recognition goes to one of the city's leading biomedical manufacturers. Would Richard Aderman and Vance Mitchell of High Core Biomedical please come forward to the podium? Mr. Aderman is CEO and Mr. Mitchell is Director of Operations at High Core Biomedical, a global manufacturer and marketer of in vitro diagnostic products. The company is committed to the development of new products and technologies providing the highest value to clinicians through innovation, reliability, and customer service, along with improved patient care and healthcare cost containment. High Core Biomedical was founded in 1981 as a research and development company under the name Hybrodoma Sciences acquisitions that followed expanded the company's presence into urinalysis, allergy, and autoimmune products used in clinical laboratories, hospitals, and doctors' offices worldwide. In 1988, High Core moved from Fountain Valley to its Garden Grove location at 7272 Chapman Avenue. Most of the company's 125 employees reside within Orange and Los Angeles counties. The industry calls for people with a light science background, and according to Mr. Mitchell, Garden Grove is the perfect location for finding quality employees with the talents needed. On February 3rd, 2010, Linden LLC, a Chicago-based healthcare private equity firm, acquired High Core Biomedical from Agilent Technologies. Linden recognized High Core as an innovative, profitable, and growing business. The new acquisition by a private firm will afford High Core the opportunity to become further involved in the community. In addition to their Garden Grove headquarters, which serves as their primary production facility, High Core has locations in the Netherlands as well as the United Kingdom. High Core's market leadership in urinalysis products provides the business with an attractive platform for continued domestic and international expansion. At this time, the mayor and the city council of Garden Grove would like to present Richard Aderman and Vance Mitchell with a resolution and gift for being honored as the March Business Spotlight. Garden Grove salutes High Core Biomedical as an industry leader and a business success in our community. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate you. I'll tell you what, I'll hand you two things after we shake hands and take photos, and then one of you has to carry this stuff back, okay? I'll hand this to one of you. And let me pull this out, because I think this is really... Wow. Okay. That's a little token. We appreciate everything you're doing for our community and our residents. And if you turn around, we'll get your picture taken for posterity.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Thanks. On behalf of all our 100 employees here...
Well, the microphone is yours for a limited period of time. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Just very quickly, we appreciate this award, and on behalf of the 100 employees, 100-plus employees here in Garden Grove, as we said, we've been here for 22 years. We're proud to be part of the community and have changed with the community over time. So, thank you very much for this recognition.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could say something just real quick?
Go ahead.
Guys, before you take off, just one closing comment. More than you may realize, we just want to let you know, we think it's a treat to have a company like High Core here in town, a big life sciences company. We want to foster the relationship and a dialogue to see what else we could do to attract other life sciences companies. We think that's a big sort of growth area for the next foreseeable future, and would love to see more companies like High Core or complementary to High Core come into town. So, great, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll open oral communication for the council and the agency. Randolph Maynor?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to discuss the relocation, I don't know if you call it a brochure, but information that you supplied to tenants at 12721 Harbor Boulevard, which is known as Travel Country Trailer Park. All right? I'm a member of ASA, okay, which is now a former member of Acorn, but is controlling the state of California only. It's an alliance of communities, oh geez, I can never remember it. Anyway, we're trying to improve communities here in California. I've lived in the travel country for since 1998, so we're looking at 12 years, okay? I'm glad the city council has seen fit to complete a lot of the improvements that we asked for. You know, it's been slow coming, but then yet it's being done, so thank you. I've got to give you credit where credit's due. I'm glad to see that the city has finally recognized the need to replace the family housing. That was something that was, you know, top of the list and was necessary in order for any of us to come to an agreement. But in light of that, we all have to remember that each RV is a unit, okay? And we can't do "by the bedroom." These units are family units. So, let's take a look at them as houses, and they need to be replaced with housing. And it's extremely necessary. Now, the only thing that really sticks in my craw with the information that you supplied us in your brochure was that there's no title search, there's no, you know, there's absolutely nothing according to the state of California's laws as housing. You can, and according to this, you can put us in anything, but it doesn't have to comply with the state of California's standards. And that, we just, we can't dismiss that, and I'm sure that there are probably a few other people that have a few other, you know, disagreements with your information, but I appreciate the time that you gave me to come up here and voice my opinion. And hopefully, next time we meet, it'll be, you know, on a, let's say, less aggressive format. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robin Marcario.
I am Robin Marcario, lifelong resident here in Garden Grove. I wanted to make a couple of brief announcements. There is a tree planting ceremony scheduled for Wednesday, March 10th, at 9:00 in the morning. It's a joint community effort. The Moose Lodge, the Living Springs Church, the Malabar Apartments, and the Central Garden Grove Neighborhood Association all contributed to the purchase of the trees, the five trees that will be replaced along Bixby, which is just west of Brookhurst. It's at the backside of Brookhurst Elementary School, and we're very grateful that the tree department at Public Works is going to be contributing, as well as the kids from the Brookhurst Elementary will be kind of filling in the holes. So, it's a very nice community effort that we've all, as nonprofits, all contributed to in our small way to make our community better. I also wanted to highlight the fact that the census is being sent out in the next week or so. We've all received this letter, which gives some information about what the census actually is. It's, the census is conducted every 10 years, and it helps to the community so that we get our fair share of community funds for highways, schools, health facilities, and many other programs that our neighborhood, specifically here in Garden Grove, needs. So, you just need to complete the questionnaire. There are 10 questions, and it's all kept private. It's purely for obtaining the numbers so that we get federal funds. Also, the last brief thing I wanted to mention was, unfortunately, Pastor Bob Rodenberg, here from the Methodist Church, passed away the other day. His service, his remembrance service is scheduled for this Saturday, March 13th, at 2:00 P.M. Just briefly, Bob Rodenberg, Pastor Rodenberg, was an exemplary community leader. He sought to include everyone in the democratic process. His concerns and the way that he reached out and informed people about how to be involved in the process, his concerns with regards to healthcare, the youth, and senior services in particular, he's a great loss to our community. And just would be kind enough, Mayor, to honor him at the closing of the meeting. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Crystal Sims.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Sims. I'm an attorney at the Legal Aid Society of Orange County, and I'm speaking on behalf of two residents I represent at the Travel Country RV Park. And my comments are directed to consent item number 4A. I'm respectfully requesting that this matter be set for public hearing for the following reasons. The agency is required by Health and Safety Code Section 33413.5 to allow a reasonable time for review and comment of the relocation plan. The plan was sent out to the residents of Travel Country RV Park, I believe, on February 24th, and I'm not certain when the residents received the plan. I found out about it on March 4th. There's insufficient time to determine if the proposed financing is adequate to address the housing needs of Travel Country RV Park residents, and it's also insufficient time to determine whether the proposed location is adequate to meet the residents' housing needs, given that the building that is going to be rehabilitated is currently occupied by other tenants. So, again, I ask that the matter be set for public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Phong Lee, I'm sorry.
Most of you have known me and worked with me before. My name is Phong Lee, and I'm the current president for the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations of Southern California and the chairperson for the TEFF Festival 2010 that took place less than a month ago. First of all, I'd like to say that the TEFF Festival was a big success for our organization and for the volunteers, and I'd like to thank the City of Garden Grove, the city council, and the mayor, and all of the city staff for your help, support, and cooperation. Over the three days, we have, you know, many residents and families came, from all communities in Garden Grove, came and enjoyed the sunny weather, the carnival rides, and all the cultural attractions that we had. We'd like to thank the Garden Grove Police Department and all the community organizations that participated in our festival as well. Now, as you know, our festival has been around for 29 years, and out of those, out of which 10 of those years have been at Garden Grove Park. So, I'd like to, I know that both Mayor Dalton and Councilmember Broadwater have been on council for all those 10 years, so I'd like to personally give you an extra thank you for your continuing support of our organization. I'm aware that at the last regular city council meeting, there were concerns brought up by a new council member, Councilmember Andrew Do regarding our festival and our organization. I was surprised to learn that there were no direct communication with our organization or any notification about the concerns prior to it being brought up to the city council, and therefore, we were not able to be here to respond to those concerns. A meeting request was made by city staff for a separate meeting with a council member. As you know, we met regularly with city staff, so every year, so we're happy to continue to do so. I'd like to say a few minutes to address some of those concerns that were brought up at the last regular city council meeting. First of all, in regard to participants in our festival, all vendors and sponsors of our festival must obtain all necessary documents and permits from the city prior to the event. Therefore, the city knew well ahead of time who will participate in our festival. We only allow participants to display their materials inside their booth and the space that was provided to them, and that they can only display their own material, not a third party's. On occasions when there are vendors and sponsors who violate their term of agreement, such as giving their booth away to a third party without notifying us in the city and to seek approval ahead of time, we would ask that third party to vacate the space. For example, we had had an incident this year where a Vietnamese television station decided to give away their booth to a Republican Assembly candidate, and another incident where a sponsor also hung a banner of a county-elected official without our knowledge or approval. So, in those, in both of those cases, we had addressed the sponsors about the violation of their term of agreement according to the guidelines agreed upon by the city and our organization. In regard to our organization's magazine, it has been in publication for almost three decades now, featuring articles that reflect young Vietnamese-American community, the voices of the youth, and inspirational stories. In the past publications, we had featured outstanding community individuals such as Assemblyman Van Tran, Dan Seon on this council, also Westminster Mayor Protem Tri Thar, Rose Meat Mayor John Tran, Professor Vit Dinh, along with others such as comedian Dad Fan, former Cowboy, Dallas Cowboy linebacker Dad Nguyen, et cetera. This year, because our community is commemorating the 35th anniversary of the fall of Saigon, our editor wanted us to reflect on our own journey in serving the community. Therefore, we decided to feature an article about a former president and a former TEFF Festival chairman, Phong Nguyen, who was instrumental in bringing the festival to the city, and also the idea and instituting in our contract to have 50% of the net proceeds going back, donating back to nonprofit organizations throughout Garden Grove, the Vietnamese community, and beyond. So, his article appeared along with other young Vietnamese professionals, not just himself. In regard to our organization, I want to make it clear that we are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) community organization. As an organization, we do not endorse any political candidate or engage in any activities relating to elections or campaigning. Now, regard to the expenses of putting up the festival, I know that some of the council members who have been around long enough to know that according to the contract that we signed with the city, we are responsible for reimbursing the city all expenses, and we have been doing so for the past many years. And I know my comments are long, but I know that this is really important, so I ask if you can grant me a little bit extra time.
Just wrap it up. You're running out of time. There's several people that want to speak.
Right. For example, we reimburse the city $30,000 for city support, $4,000 for loss of revenues for the park usage. In adding on all deposit and fee, we pay over $40,000. And I want to note something very important, that in 2009, there was an accident where there was an oil spillage because of lack of care from our food vendor. Now, by working with the staff carefully this year, we were able to avoid that, and there was no spillage at all, and that's a big accomplishment for both ends, I think. So, it showed that we're not only experienced in organizing it, but we're also responsible for our own action. So, just to wrap it up, I'd like to say that our festival and our organization is a way that we teach young people the spirit of volunteerism, serving the community, and develop future leader for the community. And just to wrap it up, I'd like to thank the city council again. And next year is our 30th anniversary of the TEFF Festival, and we're looking forward to it, and we're looking forward to working with all of you and have all of you with us as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Lynn White.
Good evening, councilmembers. I just wanted to thank you for taking time to review our request to continue our short-term residential rentals in the City of Garden Grove and allow others to continue their rentals as well. As a homeowner in the City of Garden Grove since 1986, we continue to believe in the freedoms offered to all city residences by the constitutional law and local city ordinances. It has been our comfort to live in a wonderful neighborhood that doesn't include a homeowners' association that would restrict our way of life, or the color of our home, or the landscaping we've planted, and taking over the years that helps to set the appeal of our neighborhood. It was mentioned at the last city council meeting that by offering short-term residential rentals, it might incur additional city expenses to maintain or enforce them. We wanted to offer our thoughts in comparing this to our federal government when each of us applied our honesty, integrity, and responsibility in paying our yearly taxes. As responsible citizens, we take our federal and local taxes seriously, and we know that the federal, state, and local governments have random audits for individuals and businesses currently pertaining to bed tax, as well as to retail taxes as opposed to wholesale businesses conducted, and we are aware this falls subject to the same audits. Given these thoughts, there should be no more or less policing needed to verify any license holding short-term residential rental that is abiding by the law and collecting its bed tax. I also wanted to additionally take this time to clarify my comments said during the early February city council meeting. When I addressed the council and mentioned that the mayor's friend owned a short-term residential rental in the City of Garden Grove, it gave the appearance that the mayor knew of this. When the intention was to pass on information given to me, not to indicate that there was awareness on the mayor's part, to clarify, on speaking to the owners of the vacation rentals, one individual listed in Garden Grove had indicated that he knew the mayor as well as others in the city. And anybody can refer to somebody as a friend. I had no knowledge otherwise. He indicated that his property was an investment and that he had not discussed this with the mayor or others, that he had a business license and paid the bed taxes. I realize just because an individual has residential rental does not mean that the mayor or anybody else within that residential rental, does not mean that anybody else within the City of Garden Grove or council position knew about it, nor was the comment meant that the mayor would know about it, approve of it, or support it. Wanted to take this time to apologize to the mayor for any miscommunication and let it known it was not my intention for it to be misleading. Also, as far as neighbors, at any time, I never told any of the neighbors that the mayor owned a residential rental. I simply repeated the information as I'm repeating now and as I repeated in the first meeting, that that person had mentioned knowledge, you know, that he knew people and when I made that call. So, anyway, in conclusion, I just wanted to take my last minute to express our gratitude in having the opportunity to share the thoughts with the city council and hope that, just know that we're available by email to discuss any questions you may have regarding residential rentals in the City of Garden Grove, and thanks for this.
I have one question. What's the name of the person that allegedly said that I knew about this?
I can't get the name for you. I don't remember off the top of my head. I have it printed out. It's listed on the websites that we list with. They're very good.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. That's fine. Okay, yeah, I would like the name, because I definitely want to contact that person personally, because that's totally incorrect. Craig White.
Good evening, councilmembers. I want to take this time to share with you something I learned recently that I think was of tremendous value for myself, and you can reflect upon it where you feel it deemed necessary. I had the fortune of serving as foreman on a jury for a civil case with San Ana Municipal Court with Judge Derek Hunt. And in so much as I wasn't really wanting to be there, I found that it was advantageous and quite a learning process on my own part, and something that kind of stuck with me that I've been applying in my daily life, and that is to look at all legal issues and, most importantly, personal issues. And I looked at that upon my own reflection as well as to not make my decisions based off emotion, or passion, or bias. And I know that you all already know this and that you apply that to your council. I want to take this time tonight and share the same residential rental thoughts with you, and I know that you all had lingering questions last time, and I've been with city councils before and had an opportunity to speak and discuss, and I know that this type of communication makes it limiting, and I would like to have a 20-second opportunity for a Q and A that we can kind of keep short, and I'd like to start that with you, Mr. Jones.
This is not the forum for a question and answer, okay? If you have a statement to make, this is the time you make it, and if anyone chooses to get back with you, they will, but it's not a forum for a dialogue.
Okay. Well, I'd like to go ahead and elaborate on the opportunity for residential rental and let you know that what we've seen in the City of Garden Grove has it being opportunistic for both revenue for the city as well as an opportunity to prevent failure for foreclosures within the city or homes that have been left abandoned, as many have been we've seen as we've driven by in many cities, where they've been boarded up and closed, and some have had individuals that have been cooking and things like that on the property, and neighbors have had to turn them in, not knowing that they were actually residents or whatnot. And I'm sure you're aware of this occurring in other cities, but we definitely didn't want to see that happen. We wanted to take the time to, with earnest, to utilize our property for not only our own usage and friends and family there, to let them be entertained within the City of Garden Grove, but also opportunities for bringing in tourist trade so that the City of Garden Grove can at least be competitive with the City of Anaheim. Thank you for the time to speak tonight and for your concern, and hope that through due diligence, you're taking the time to pursue this matter and for withcoming to offer residential short-term rentals.
Thank you. Marina Limón.
Mi nombre es Marina Limón y soy residente del 12721 Harbor Boulevard.
Good afternoon. My name is Marina Limón. I'm the president of 12721 Harbor Boulevard.
He received it for 20 years, my family and I. Siempre hemos trabajado aquí alrededor de la ciudad de Garden Grove. Mi esposo trabaja para el distrito escolar de Garden Grove.
I've lived in that location for 20 years. We've always lived, actually, in this area, and my husband works, I've always worked in that area, and my husband works for the Garden Grove School District.
Estamos contentos porque por fin la ciudad ha reconocido su obligación legal de hacer un plan para reemplazar nuestras unidades.
We're happy that the city is finally recognizing its legal obligation to replace our housing.
Pero hay un plan que todavía no está totalmente bueno para nosotros porque nos da prioridad para reemplazar las viviendas, pero hay otra cosa, no podemos vivir en ellas.
But there is a plan that is highly problematic in terms of replacement, because the plan is to replace the housing, and then we don't get to live in it.
So, quiero pedirles por favor si pueden revisar esto y a ver si nos podemos comunicar pronto.
So, I would like you to go back to review this again, and hopefully, we can continue to discuss this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Sanchez.
Mi nombre es Jose Sanchez. Te quiero pedir a que se paren todos los residentes del Travel Country, por favor.
Good evening. My name is Jose Sanchez, and I would like to everyone that lives in Travel Country, RV Park, to please stand.
Soy miembro de ACE, y quiero decir que vivimos en el Travel Park de Garden Grove. Yo he vivido por más de diez años en la ciudad de Garden Grove.
Uh, I'm a member of ACE, and I have lived in the Travel Country in Garden Grove for 10 years.
Que pues somos personas que trabajamos duro y está bien que, que van a reemplazar las viviendas, se me hace algo justo, y este, pero necesitamos una garantía porque queremos vivir siendo residentes de, de Garden Grove. Gracias.
Uh, we work hard, um, and, uh, you know, we like living here. Uh, we're glad that the city would like to replace the, our units, but we need a guarantee because we would like to continue to be residents of Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Toby Rubin.
I was just wondering if the council is aware of an increasing problem with trash. I have a suggestion to make. Either we have, um, posters made up or stickers that we can put on our trash cans because these people who come by, and we have our trash picked up on Thursday, they come by and they're taking stuff out of the cans, and that's stealing from the city, especially the recycling, um, can. I was told to turn my pail around so that the lifting side faces my house and to put it on the grass. I did that, and they wouldn't take the pail. I had to call them, and they came back and picked it up at a later date. So if there's something that, it's not funny.
(laughing).
So I was wondering if there's something that you might suggest to another department to do for this, because I don't want people going through my trash.
I think your idea of a sticker is an excellent idea, and we'll certainly bring it to their attention.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close all communications and recess the council, and we'll go to the agency.
Okay, at this time, we'll call roll for the agency. Ms. Baylor.
Member Dalton.
Here.
Member Doe. Member Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Nguyen.
Here.
Chair Broadwater.
Here. We had a closed session. We have nothing to report on that at this time. We have oral communications. Let's go to consent items, and I would like to pull 4A.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, as you know, it's been referenced, you already have a, a copy of a letter submitted by attorneys representing, uh, the residents of the RV Park. In addition, we'd like to make a minor modification to the replacement housing plan, and that is to remove item eight on page seven, and copies of the updated version are available at the public, for the public at City Hall and the clerk's office or on the city's website as a link to this agenda item. So with that, uh, do you have questions? Or would you like a staff report on this item?
Well, I, Ms., uh, Ms. Sims, when she spoke, she said that there were several things that weren't correct with it. I'd like to ask Ms. Brady if that's correct.
Um, Member Broadwater, um, we did receive the letter from the plaintiffs' counsel in the Limon versus Garden Grove pending litigation, and we have a substantive disagreement about, um, a number of legal issues. And I can respond further, but we believe that the agency has complied with the replacement housing statutes, that the plan before you is in compliance with the statutory requirements of 33413, and that the Grove Park Affordable Housing Project is a excellent resource and intended, uh, replacement housing, um, for, um, any units that may in fact, if ever, be destroyed or removed from the housing market. There are 104 units at Grove Park, one, two, and three-bedroom units. The vast majority of them, the, the high majority of them are affordable to 30% and below income and 50% and below income, and a small minority at 60% and below. So 100% of that project for 55 years will be affordable housing for this community, and pursuant to the statutes as drafted now, it fully meets the, um, replacement housing obligations of this agency if units are removed.
Okay, very good. Uh, any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Uh, one comment was made that, that it's, somebody said, "Well, it's finally, uh, good that the city of Garden Grove is aware of their replacement housing requirements." I think that we've been fully aware of it from the day go. I mean, we, this isn't the first project that we've gone into and done it. Uh, I talked about the last time you were here. I talked about the mobile home park that we moved 117 mobile homes without one lawsuit. Certainly, we are aware of our responsibilities, and we will comply with our responsibilities.
We do have a disagreement about the extent of what those responsibilities are, and some of them are footnoted in the plan.
And we always will, but believe me, nobody, nobody will be hurt, in my opinion, in this transit, transition period, and, uh, we're not going to put you out on the street or anything like that. We're going to be there to help you from one end to the other. So let's go ahead. We have a motion for consent items.
Are you putting back item 4A?
Yeah, I'm putting it back.
Okay. Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
We had no public hearings tonight. Items for consideration, none. Matters from agency members. Anybody like to bring up a point or anything? Hearing none. At this time, we will adjourn till March 23rd at 5:30 PM.
Okay, I'll reconvene, I'll reconvene the City Council, and we'll go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6G be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
Okay, if no one wants to pull any, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move. The balance.
Second.
I have motion of second. Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, your first public hearing is to establish an underground utility district for the Hazard Avenue area, and Bill Murray is here to give you a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor, it's blowing.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. On February 23rd of this year, a resolution of necessity was adopted by the City Council to form Underground Utility District Number 24. The resolution details the boundary of the district and authorizes the work to be done per the Public Utilities Commission Rule 20A. A public hearing must be held to comply with state law. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear testimony on the question of the undergrounding district. Should the City Council approve the resolution ordering the undergrounding of utility facilities, the city clerk will notify the affected resident, and the work will proceed immediately and be completed by May 1st of this year. This concludes staff report. Here to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
It's a, it's public hearing.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I beg your pardon. I'm so used to closing them now that, uh, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
I have motion of second. Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, 7B.
7B, Mr. Mayor, is a public hearing to consider amending the municipal code to allow use of artificial turf within the other zones here in the city, and Lee Moreno is here to give a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is a request for City Council consideration for a code amendment amending Title IX of the municipal code to allow artificial turf, turf within the multifamily residential, office professional, commercial, industrial, and open space zones subject to special standards. In April of 2009, the City Council approved Amendment A 14609 to allow artificial turf in the R1 zone, which included special standards that address maintenance, installation, and the use of living plant material along with artificial turf. Artificial turf is still prohibited in all other zones of the city. Since that time, staff has received inquiries from the Apartment Association of Orange County and more recently, uh, more formal requests from an apartment owner to consider a code amendment to allow the artificial turf in the multifamily zones. In response to these requests, staff, staff has created standards to allow the turf in all zones for consideration. The proposed amendment was presented to the Planning Commission in January of this year, who approved a recommendation for approval. The proposed standards follow the standards that were approved for the single-family zones with the exception that consideration to allow the turf in the multifamily, commercial, industrial, and open space zones would require property owners and developers to submit landscape plans for review. This would ensure that the turf was installed to comply with city code as well as the conditions of approval for the land use entitlements that affect their properties. Um, the code amendment includes the following standards. The turf should have an eight-year minimum no fade warranty. It needs to be installed by licensed professional and pursuant to the manufacturer's requirements. It needs to be installed and maintained to effectively assimilate, uh, to simulate the appearance of natural turf. Uh, it must be maintained in a fadeless condition and, uh, maintained free of weeds, debris, holes, and depressions. The areas of living, uh, plant material within the front, rear, and common areas shall be included within the overall landscape design. The turf should be separated, uh, by the, from flower beds by concrete mowtaret, bender board, or some other barrier acceptable to the city to prevent intrusion of weeds and living plant material in the turf. And then finally, the detailed, uh, landscape plans need to be submitted to the Planning Division for review and approval prior to the installation to ensure compliance with city code and any valid land use approvals on the properties. With that, it is recommended that the City Council introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance for Amendment Number A 15310, amending sections 9.1240090H, ground cover 9.1240090L, substitute landscaping 9.1640070H, ground cover, and 9.1640070L, substitute landscaping of Title IX of the municipal code to allow artificial turf within the R2, R3, OP, C1, C2, C3, M1, MP, and OS zones subject to special standards. And that would conclude staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. How many permits have been issued on the, uh, uh, turf, artificial turf so far?
Um, we didn't really, we don't really issue permits for the artificial turf.
Oh, you said they had to get an okay. So what do you call it?
Um, you know, we've had inquiries, but as far as anybody installing them, whether than the original six or 10 that were out there that started this whole thing, we don't know of anybody else that's actually installed it.
(laughing) Zero compliance. Okay, thank you.
Any other question? And I'd like to open a public hearing. Anyone here would like to speak on this matter? Charles Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The idea of artificial turf, uh, with our drought condition, which is hard to believe in the current weather we're having, but, uh, it's a, a good idea to keep the appearance of properties up because a lot of the properties during the dry season just, uh, really deteriorate. But there's another issue that I think has to be addressed at the same time, and that is the tendency of a lot of, uh, property owners to not only disregard the lawns that they're supposed to have, or at least some percentage of plants and lawn, but they pave over most of their front lawn or front part of their house for use as a driveway. And as a volunteer for code enforcement, we drove around and we noticed many residences have the same situation where they not only have paved over the, almost the entire front of their homes, they've parked commercial trucks there. So I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed. If we're going to do anything about changing the code to allow artificial turf, let's also address the issue of these people not having any landscaping at all in front of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else would like to speak on this matter? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a comment on what we just.
It's a Broadwater.
You know, I used to live in Southgate when I was a kid, and some guy cemented it in his whole front yard, and then put up a block of cement, and then took his lawnmower and put it on top of it and painted it gold. (laughing) Well, anyway.
Did you bring it with you when you moved here from Southgate?
(laughing) A long time ago.
Okay, what, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the artificial turf. I'm actually an installer, and, um, so I have a sample of, a middle of the road.
Okay.
If anybody want to take a look at it. If it's not.
What is your name?
Renee Guerrero from Keiko Construction.
Okay, before you leave, will you fill out a card and give it to the clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure.
No, you, you can do it after you're done speaking.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any other questions?
I have a sample, just to take a look at it. I have the warranty.
Sure, why not? Let's take a look at it.
I have some of the warranty and the information on it that escaped the original lead in the product.
It smells like grass.
(laughing) The quality is actually very nice. It's the same product that went into the Home Depot Center and UC Riverside as well.
That's why it's always green.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll close the, uh, public hearing and go to items for consideration.
Yeah, I have to, uh, despite what Lee Moreno rattled off as part of the recommendation, it wasn't the title of the ordinance, so if.
Okay, you're going to read it, and then we'll go ahead.
Yes. It's an ordinance of the City Council, the city of Garden Grove approving code amendment number A 15310 to allow the use of artificial turf within the R2 limited multi-residential, R3 multifamily residential, OP office professional, C1 neighborhood commercial, C2 community commercial, C3 heavy commercial, M1 limited industrial, MP industrial park, and OS open space zones.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes, with Councilmember Broadwater voting no.
Can we take five?
Yeah. Okay. We take five-minute break. Okay, we're at, uh, items for consideration.
Yes, 9A, and that's adoption of a paramedic tax override rate for fiscal year 2010-11, and Chief Dave Burke is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. In 1974, Garden Grove voters approved a property tax to pay for emergency paramedic services. The ballot measures stated specific purposes for the property tax. They were to provide for a magic, an emergency medical care system with a response time of five minutes, to pay salaries, and to purchase and maintain vehicles and necessary equipment. The voter-approved property tax was established an amount not to exceed 10 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. Excuse me. From 1975 to 1984, the council set the rate at 10 cents, and from 1985 to present, the rate has been set at 2 and 1/2 cents. Paramedic program has seen many changes from 1974 when only one paramedic team serviced the entire city. Since the inception of the paramedic program, there has been a constant increase in demand for paramedics from the community and subsequently a higher need to meet the five-minute response time. Paramedic teams were added in the late 1970s and again in the mid 1980s. The call for service was in high demand by the 1980s, and two additional options were placed into service to enhance paramedic service while maintaining adequate fire protection. One method was instituting the call screening process at the dispatcher level, which increased, which decreased paramedic response time by 40%. paramedic response time by 40%. Prior to call screening, a paramedic was dispatched on all medical aides. The call screening process improved over the years and has become an effective tool in reducing paramedic responses, which keeps paramedics available for those situations that necessitate a higher level of medical care. The other approach to enhancing paramedic response was through the use of paramedic assessment engines that allowed for faster response and greater paramedic availability. The Fire Department has instituted many changes over time to keep up with the community with the rising population and an increased demand for paramedic responses. Today, to provide an emergency medical care system that is able to maintain a five-minute response time, there are two paramedic engine companies, three paramedic assessment engines, and one paramedic squad. Over the last five years, the Garden Grove Fire Department has averaged 10,946 calls for service per year. Of those calls, an average of 5,762 were for paramedics, representing 53% of the total call volume. The property tax override has been set at 2.5 cents for many years and is no longer adequate to cover the program costs. The city's general fund has made up the difference between the cost of the program and the revenue that the property tax generated. Today, the cost for providing service is $6.7 million. Given the current economic conditions, the general fund can no longer afford to subsidize the cost of providing service, and an adjustment of 3.5 cents per $100 assessed valuation would address the shortfall between the program cost and the revenue currently collected. Adjusting the rate to 6 cents per 100 assessed valuation would generate $6 million annually and significantly reduce the city's general fund subsidy to the paramedic program. And that concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Mr. Broadwater.
Chief, you said that it would make $6 million available, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So you're just saying it's an additional 3,000,000 added on to the 2,500,000 that was already there?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, currently, the 2.5 generates 2.5 million, and the 3.5 would generate another 3.5 million.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, the amount of paramedics that you have now is, how many vehicles do we have?
Well, that's what I was trying to get at, is what, over the years, in order to maintain that five-minute response time, we've added paramedics to, initially, we had one squad, then we went to two squads, then we went to a paramedic squad, and then two paramedic engines, and then added three paramedic assessment engines, two on the other side of the freeway in case there's freeway collapse, and one in the hotel district. And that system, when our paramedics are at the hospital, still maintains paramedics available for that five-minute response inside the city. But to do that takes lots of, takes five fire engines and one paramedic squad.
So at any given time, we have six vehicles that are available to service the public?
That's correct.
The amount of calls that we make, what is that now? Did you go through that?
Yeah, we currently average just close, just under 11,000 calls over the last five years, and about 9,000 of them are medical aides. And of that, about 5,700 of them are paramedic-level response. And that represents about 53% of our total call volume.
Yeah, I think, I was going to ask a question, but I think you answered it. Actually, isn't it something like in the neighborhood of 80% of the calls are medical aides?
Yeah, close to 80% of the calls that we run on today are medical aides.
Okay. And these are the life-saving calls? These are the heart attacks, these are the serious injuries or whatever, automobile accidents, anything that is life-threatening?
Yeah, out of the 80%, which represents 9,000 calls, almost 6,000 of them are paramedic response calls. And the paramedic-level response calls take intervention with IV solutions, drugs, intubation, defibrillation, cardiac monitoring, those kinds of things, versus first aid that we administer on the other 4,000 calls, which are broken limbs, bandaging, cuts, you know, falls, those kinds of things.
Well, if you're one of the others, one of the other serious ones, you certainly want the paramedics there as quickly as possible to save the lives.
That's correct, and that's what our assessment engines help us do, is keep paramedics available in the city, get the paramedic to the call quickly, initiate care, and get them on their way.
Thank you.
I'll need to introduce the first reading.
Okay.
That's an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Garden Grove, establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by an ad valorem tax override and the setting of the tax rate of said override.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes, with Councilmember Wynn voting no.
9B is a resolution of intention to approve an amendment to our contract with Public Employee Retirement System, and John Clark is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, John Clark, Human Resources Director. The item before you is the first step in a three-step process to offer two years of service credit to incentivize eligible long-term employees to retire early, helping the city achieve salary savings by holding many of the resulting positions vacant. The additional cost is amortized over a 20-year period and would be rolled into the city's PERS rate beginning two fiscal years following the plan's enactment. Out of a workforce of about 850, the city has 171 eligible employees, those who are age 50 or older and have at least five years of PERS service. However, it's likely that electees will, on average, be older and have much more PERS service time than the minimum. Based on a survey of eligible employees, I think a figure of 40 early retirees is probably realistic. If you approve the resolution before you tonight, staff will return with an ordinance to complete the other two steps of the process by amending the city's contract with PERS. The proposed schedule would allow for a window period of May 15 through August 12 for eligible employees to retire should they choose to avail themselves of this program. The program is a key element of the city's coordinated effort to reduce costs in the face of continued sluggish sales tax revenue. I also note that negotiations with the city's unions have resulted in tentative agreements for further wage concessions predicated in part on offering this benefit. That concludes my report, and I'm ready to answer any questions that the council may have.
You said you're looking at possibly 40 retirees?
Um...
Approximately.
Yeah, I think that's as good a number as any.
Can you give me somewhat of an idea of how many of those positions either will not be filled or will be able to be maintained for a given period of time for salary savings for the city?
Yes, the cost estimates in terms of what we believe it's necessary to save in order to justify going forward with the program, we're estimating $1.2 million in general fund savings for next fiscal year, and then $1 million in general fund savings for the following fiscal year, and I think that's going to be in the range of 10 to 12 positions. Part of it, of course, is dependent on where the positions go. I mean, someone deciding to retire early out of the Housing Authority doesn't help the general fund. However, we may have a general fund employee that we can transfer into the Housing Authority and then achieve the general fund savings that way. So I would say, in the long way of answering your question, we're looking at maintaining at least 10 positions vacant for the next several years.
I see. Any other questions for staff?
Is there somewhere hidden here where the, if a person accepts this and goes forward with it, that they can't come back to work for the government?
Black letter law, Government Code 2903, which is if they decide to come back to work for a PERS agency anywhere in California, they will forfeit those two years.
That come back part-time?
It's allowed, but frowned upon, and it's certainly not something that we anticipate. In fact, we're telling employees flat out that that's not part of this. That defeats the purpose, I think.
Okay. Will we approve? Second. Have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
9C.
9C is...
Mayor, real quick, because I have a business relationship with a party that's affected by this, so I'm going to recuse myself and leave the room.
Mr. Mayor, 9C is the initiation of proceedings for street vacation of Walnut Avenue, Walnut Street, and Susan Emery is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Item this evening is to schedule a hearing date and to vacate a portion of Walnut Street, which will be located between Century Boulevard and Taft Street, and we remove the public right-of-way and facilitate the development of the area known as the Century Triangle. We have an exhibit right up here on the board for you to take a look at. No right-of-way access is provided on this portion of Walnut Street as the Garden Grove Traffic Commission approved the closure of the street in 2000. The parcels that were served by the street are owned by the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development and did not require right-of-way access. The general plan land use designations for the properties located adjacent to this portion of Walnut Street are residential, commercial, mixed-use 1, which is intended to provide a mix of higher-density residential and commercial uses, and civic institution, which is intended to provide educational uses, hospitals, and government facilities. The city's redevelopment plan seeks to develop this area with residential condominiums, a use that is consistent with the general plan and the zoning designation of the area. The vacated street will be incorporated into the developable land area of any future project. Staff has identified the City Council meeting of Tuesday, April 13, at 6:30 p.m., as a possible hearing date and time to proceed with the proposed street vacation. On January 21 of this year, the Planning Commission determined that the proposed street vacation conformed with the city's adopted general plan pursuant to the Government Code Section 65402. Staff recommends that the City Council take the following action: Set a public hearing date in order to proceed with vacating that portion of Walnut Street located between Century Boulevard and Taft Street as identified under Street Vacation Number SV-118-10. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer your question.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the issue.
Have a motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, if you could, have Councilman Jones come back in. And matters or any other comments or anything? Mr. Broadwater.
I'd just like to point out that the City of Garden Grove has a fabulous history of taking care of people when we've vacated their property, or we've, even in the few times that we've inland-emaned their property, we were right there, we went through the whole process, and we certainly have never let anybody down. One time when we moved the trailer park, there was a lady that was blind. We hired a service to make sure that she could go all the way through her new condominium and find everything and do everything, and it went over, I mean, it was several weeks they worked with her to make sure she could, to live by herself. There's all kinds of things we've done in the past. We've had people that wanted things moved, and we've accommodated them in a lot of different ways. And, you know, it sort of irritates me to see people taken advantage of. I think that they are being taken advantage of, but not by us, by the lawyers that represent them. And I just really think that they are going to get a good shake from us on this situation. If nothing else, I mean, the maximum amount of time that you're supposed to stay in that park is seven days, and people have been there for 20 years. You heard them tonight say that. It's not a forever thing. It's going to change, and it will happen. I'm sure they're going to take us to court on a lot of issues, but we'll get past it. But I just really hope that it all works out well for everybody.
Ms. Wynn.
Well, every week I say bye in Garden Grove, and today, that statement reflects my thinking and also my oath as a councilwoman when I first took office back in December 2006. And the oath was that I was going to serve Garden Grove. Serving Garden Grove means making sure that the people of Garden Grove are taken care of, as well as the staff of Garden Grove. And because of that, I would like the economy of Garden Grove to always prosper by making more opportunities for us to spend in Garden Grove. Today was a very hard decision for me to make on one of the items, and that was the emergency ambulance tax, and that would affect the property owners as far as being raised about $100-something dollars per home. And I thought, if I have other alternatives, then I would have picked the other alternatives, but I didn't. And I did not want the residents to have to give up $100-something dollars a month to the city instead of using that money to spend into the economy of Garden Grove. The second alternative that I saw that was if I pick, vote against that item, then I didn't want the Fire Department to think that I did not support them, because I will always support them, and we have other ways to support them, because staff has worked very, very hard to put a lot of properties' money into a piggy bank. We have properties that, in the event that we cannot make it and have a deficit, we could use to support staff. And that was not an option today for some of the study that staff did, so they have their own reasons, but I wanted to make sure the residents knew and staff knew that my decision to not support the ambulance tax today is not a decision against staff, but supportive of the growth of the economy and making sure that the money stay with the residents so they can spend in Garden Grove. Thirdly, I'd like to say happy birthday to Councilmember Doe's wife. I happened to meet her probably 20 years ago, when we both were in our 20s, and we didn't have any kids yet. She was a young junior deputy public defender, and now she is a senior deputy DA, and with kids. And so it's nice to know someone who shared the same experience mature and become successful. And I wanted to say happy birthday to her.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Several things. For starters, just happy birthday to Councilmember Doe's wife, Sherry. Second of all, we had an item that went through pretty unnoticed tonight on our consent items that had to do with agreeing to purchase some equipment materials for a skate park. And I just want to congratulate Dina. That's probably a big deal for her, because I would say that that was actually her baby, that was her brainchild. She stuck with it, and although it hasn't maybe taken the exact shape and form of what maybe she originally envisioned, it's gotten broken down into kind of a...
It's better. It's actually better, because we spend less money. And thank you for mentioning it, because I was so concerned about the other item. I missed that.
So congratulations that that actually got seen through to that point. And then one other thing, to circle back around about High Core, which is a business that we recognized tonight under the Business Spotlight. And I don't even know anybody at High Core. I don't know a lot about what they do, but I know they're in Life Sciences BioMed Company, which is a big, sort of a growth industry as we look forward, I think, for the next 10 or 15 years. But what I wanted to point out that's unique about them is, you know, and just how it ties into the bigger picture in the city, is a lot of residents say they want retailers to come to town, like Trader Joe's or otherwise. I've heard that one come up a lot. And when any of these retailers take a look at our city and consider coming here, they always break it down, and they look at the numbers, they look at the statistics, they look at the demographics. It certainly helps being able to have companies in town that employ people with college degrees, advanced degrees, that kind of stuff, and if those people move into town and so forth, that helps improve our demographics to the point that someday we may actually have a Trader Joe's. So to the extent we can be proactive about trying to bring more companies like High Core into town, that's a first step in a series of steps that it would take to get, to actually get, not just talk about, but actually get companies like Trader Joe's to come to town. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. You know, in talking about the paramedic tax, the economy is bad in Garden Grove. The economy's bad in Orange County. The economy's bad in California. It's bad in the United States. It's bad in Europe. It's bad in the world. And it's, so you can't look at one city, or one state, or one country, and say, what did they do wrong? I think you have to look at it collectively and say, what was done that may have been wrong, or maybe wasn't wrong, but what can we do to change things? So frequently, you know, people become dependent on the general fund paying for all of the services, and as costs increase, the general fund is paying more and more. And many of these services have to be self-sustaining, or they have to pay their own way, because there's only so much money...
so much money to go around. And, you know, sometimes there are very difficult decisions to make. We're looking at having early retirements and not filling positions, positions that are not life-threatening, not a life-and-death thing, but positions that still are important. But we're looking at ways to cut. And I certainly, you know, do not want and would not want to cut the fire services. I mean, the paramedics, I can't tell you, I wish I had the statistics that would tell you how many lives they save a year. And, you know, I remember somebody saying one time, well, you know, we can do with one less firehouse, or we can do with one less this. Well, that's fine if, if you're in the area near another firehouse, but if you're somebody that is not taken care of by that area, if they don't respond, that five-minute response time that we're talking about, that's a life or a death. You know, is it gonna be your brother, or your mother, or your dad, or your son, or your neighbor? You know, we can't, there are certain services that we really can't cut, but we also have to look at ways to fund them, and, because costs escalate over the years. And I think that this was the right thing to do, and that's, that's why I supported it. I, I think that I have an obligation, as does every other public official, to be concerned with public safety, to be concerned with the safety of our citizens, our residents, and ensure that they're given the best type of treatment or emergency care, and in a time that will save lives. And I think, I, I'm not think, I know that, that our fire department does that, our police department does that. And, and these are, these are things that we really have to, I think, look at and really weigh, because there are some services that can be cut. But when it comes to a life-or-death situation, I think we really have to weigh in on where we're going to ensure that the people that need help get it in a time that's necessary. I want to wish Councilman Doe's wife, Sherry, a happy birthday. I want to wish my daughter Paula, who is probably out having dinner now, and I'm here, I would have paid if I was there, Paula, but anyway, happy birthday to her. And then I'd like to adjourn the council in memory of, the council meeting in memory of Pastor Bob Rosenberg from the United Methodist Church. Anybody that knew him knew what a, what a special person he was. He was concerned with people, and he had brain cancer, I believe, and, and did pass away, but he touched very, very many lives, not only in this community, but throughout California. And he was quite a man, and we will, will adjourn in his honor. And the next regular meeting of the City Council will be Tuesday, March 23 at 5:30 PM, and the City Council chamber's here. Thank you.